Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, early evening, everyone. We'll call to order the July 20th Select War Meeting to Order. No changes of the agenda, but I guess we can remove... There won't be any Town Managers Report, which is the second item. The monthly Town Managers Report, there will not be, that number two, so you can take that off the agenda. Otherwise, I don't think there's any changes. Announcements?
Thank you. This meeting is being video and audio recorded. We have an introduction of applicants and a review of applications for appointments to several committees. And this is in accordance with the Board's Committee Appointment Policy. And typically, I think, we read the applicant's names, and if they are here or online, they can speak as they wish.
The speaking part is scheduled for August 17th.
Oh, okay.
I just wanted to note one thing. On the Committee Vacancy Appointments Timeline, that's in your packet, there shows... It shows that there are two Finance Committee seats. And the applications are both due on Friday, July 15th. That is incorrect. It was only the one seat with the term expiring 2025. The other seat with the term expiring 2024, that resignation was just accepted last week. So that needs to go through our formal committee appointment process and will be advertised. So if the three applicant... If, you know, two of the three applicants for Fincome that is currently in place wish to have me carry over their application to the next round for that seat, I'm happy to do that. So for Agricultural Commission, we have four seats available and two applicants. They are Charity Benz and Pamela Perrin. Contract Review Subcommittee, we have Dorothy Hertz. She was technically the incumbent, but had applied late for the annual renewals. Council for Human Services, we have one seat available and two applicants. Joseline Ramirez, she was also an incumbent who applied late. And then Suzanne Keating. Finance Committee, we have... Again, I'm going to correct this. We have one seat available and three applicants. Stephen Maury, who was the incumbent but applied late. Jeremy Blumer and Joseph Wright.
Erica, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but just to ask a question about that particular one. Will you reach out to the applicants and let them know about the next round? Okay, thank you very much.
HTC Associate, this was not in your packet originally, as of last week, because the applicant had emailed me when I was out of the office, and so I didn't get it until yesterday. But it was on time, and that is one seat available, one applicant, and that is Constance Patton. And then Zoning Board of Appeals Alternate, one seat available, one applicant, James Mundani. And again, he was the incumbent who applied late.
There is no... Moving on in the announcements, there is no Board meeting next Wednesday, July 27th, at 5:30. And I had an addition that we forgot to put on under announcements. The Board has scheduled a State of Housing Workshop on Tuesday, August 2nd, at 4:00 p.m., and that will be a remote meeting. I think that's it for announcements.
Thanks, Libby. Any Select War announcements or comments to start off with? Brooke?
I just want to ask the community to be careful out there. I've been riding my bike and had a very close call with an inattentive driver today. And just appreciate a heads up.
Thank you, Brooke. Okay, follow-up comments from prior Select War meetings? There's nothing on the agenda, but Libby and I were talking today, and we might have a couple of just quick updates.
Yep, I have a little bit of one. As a follow-up to a public comment made at the Board's July 13th meeting regarding stormwater drainage issues at the Silver... in the Silver Street area. The day after that meeting, that Thursday, the sewer director with... along with engineers for the Sewer Force Main Number Three Project reviewed the area for any additional design changes that might be able to be made as part of the project. Design changes had already been part of this project as it was, but they went back to look again and see what other drainage improvements might be able to be made as part of the project. And they may, in fact, have to be separated out a little bit because the project is a sewer project, not a stormwater project. So we need to sort that out a little bit. This past Monday, a Public Works Department crew conducted an inspection of the drainage structures that are in the Silver Street parking lot to determine if there were any blockages, which there were not, but the catch basins were nonetheless cleaned again. And just as I had reviewed at the Board's June 22nd meeting, stormwater issues are island-wide for a variety of reasons. And we are working toward stormwater regulations, but it is going to take some time.
Thank you, Libby. I just thought it was a really good response from the town on that, short-term and long-term.
And I think some... People have to realize some of this isn't the town's responsibility. Some of what's happening is because of changes of neighbor... Neighbors have changed things, and they've rerouted water and done a lot of different changes that, you know, that were okay 10 years ago. They're not okay today with the amount of hardscape and pools and landscaping and new things. We've raised grades. All this is different, and I think it's going to take us years to correct some of this. So I think, you know, I think it's great what you did, Libby, but I think the expectation has to be for people to solve this, A, don't cause the problem to begin with, if you can, and B, solve it as a neighborhood on your own. You know, I think the town is scrambling. And if it's the town's responsibility, it certainly will do it like it's doing here. But a lot of the calls we get are not. And the town is very polite in explaining that, but I like, for the record, I like to make sure it's pretty clear.
Thanks, Matt. Is there anything else, Libby, on the follow-up?
Nope, that was it.
Okay. Okay, on the public comment, is there any public comment here that's not on the agenda? Tucker?
Hi, Tucker Holland, Housing Director. I just wanted to make people aware that there is a big push going out at the State House now for the transfer fee. Senator Seer has introduced our Home Rule Petition as an amendment to a major bill, the Economic Development Bill, that is a train that is going through the State House. And every letter, every email of support that goes in registers and could end up making the difference. So folks have been writing many letters, some just incredible statements from our community. Very appreciative of that. Just would like anyone who has not had an opportunity to do that, if they had a chance sometime today or tomorrow, it could help tremendously. And if you go to the town website under News slash New and Noteworthy, you can find all the information you need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I did a quick one last night. It took me five minutes. And I've heard back already from a couple of the Senate... You know, Senator's Office and someone else. So they've followed up already. And so it will, you know, someone read it. I'm not sure it's going to get to the right person, but at least one person read it since last night, so.
And I would say, if you're inspired to write a letter, turn around and ask five friends to write a letter, because this can really make a difference. I think I emailed about 75 people out of my contacts last night and asked them to do so. So let's get this done, Nancy Tuckett.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I wish I had five friends. Oh, well.
One day.
Hi, Megan Terry. I just wanted to give a shout out to a member of our community. How about now? Does that matter? Do you want me to repeat everything? Just a quick shout out to a member of the community who's in this room, who I've seen on numerous occasions doing a kind, good thing, just because it was a kind, good thing to do and doing it when nobody, maybe Matt, is up at that hour to witness it. And that's Ms. Gibson. I've seen her on numerous occasions walking on the bike path with her dog and a trash bag and picking up trash. This morning, I saw her basically slaloming back and forth between the bike path and the road, picking up trash that clearly is not hers, a good distance away from her home, happily walking with her dog. So just wanted to give a shout out for that, because it was a good thing that she's doing, just because it's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. We... I encountered Megan with her horse. She was taking it.
Oh, wow. Well, Libby, that's when I first met you, 15, 17 years ago, the Clean Team. Any other public comment here? Oh, we have one hand up online.
Hello?
Yep, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to comment briefly on the...
Can you state your name, please?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry. Peter Halli, and I'm at 24 Program. I wanted to comment briefly on Mr. Fee's comment about the surface water issues. And I think there is a town bylaw that gives the town power to regulate surface waters on private property during the process of getting your building permits approved and all the rest of that. And I've laid that out in an email to the town. And so the conclusion that it's just private property owners, yes, at the end of the day, it is just private property owners who create different grades and other thing and change water flows. But the town does have a role, which I'm not sure that the town is actually really paying attention to in the approval process. And I apologize, I don't have the exact bylaw, but it's something like 137-37, something like that. But I can send that in a written comment. And I think it would behoove the town as we have more and more surface water problems that in the approval process for building permits, that it pay attention to what I understand the existing bylaw permits it to pay attention to in terms of regulating these surface water flows that are created by privately property owners when they change the grades of their property.
Thank you, Peter. Any other public comment tonight, remotely or here? For items not on the agenda? Okay. Move on. There's no new business that I know of. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of July 13th and the Treasury warrants of July 20th?
So moved.
Quick comment. There's a run-on sentence. It said something like David Iverson was, and that just ended. So just, I'll approve it with that corrected.
Thanks, Matt.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I don't say anybody's name. It's kind of strange. But that passes 5-0. Pending contracts. Any questions? Or comment?
I just want to make note, there's a contract in here from a family that has offered a rental year-round to a town employee. And I would like to encourage the community to think hard about also offering any dwellings they have available to rent for town staff.
I'll second the motion to approve. Thank you, Brooke.
Don, did you have anything?
I made the motion.
Oh, he's made a motion, sorry. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. Public hearings. We'll open a public hearing for National Grid Utility Petition for the Installation of Underground Facilities for Service Connections at Sixth Boulevard. Do we have someone here for National Grid?
Yes, good evening, Board. It's Jose Vasquez from National Grid.
Yep, go ahead. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Board. Good evening, residents. Yes, we're here just petitioning for one three-inch duct to go from existing pad onto the property of Sixth Boulevard. This will be on the dirt shoulder of Boulevard. It would not affect the bike path. And the reasoning for it is just to provide electrical service for Sixth Boulevard.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. We'd like to speak on this. Public or Board members? Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pleasure, the Board.
Seems pretty straightforward. We have approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries unanimously. On the Citizen Department Committee Request, Town Clerk Request for Appointment to the Registrar of Voters. You have Nancy? I think you're muted, Nancy.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. This is just a request. Our longtime-serving Registrar Janet Coffin has resigned. And I want to thank Janet. She was here many years before the, you know, over 14 years I've been in this office. I believe she served for over 35 years. And I would like to nominate, as you can see, Judy Wodenski, to replace Janet. I think the letter of her qualifications is fairly self-explanatory. And she is also a registered Republican, as Janet was.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Nancy, and thank you, Janet Coffin, for those 35 years.
Wow.
That's great. Okay, next up, Request for Approval of Execution and Acceptance of the Easement from Bluefin Partners and Ellen's Way.
I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Ken.
Okay. This is a fairly straightforward document to consider. This is a process that started way back in 2007 with respect to the development of the property over on Ellen's Way. And what was happened, what happened was that a special permit was issued. And then as a result of that special permit, one of the conditions was that there needed to be an easement given to provide access to the open space that is a part of that area. And Town Council has reviewed this and has reviewed the documentation and has approved the documentation. What I want to point out is that the easement is a five-foot easement and a butt's property that is owned by the land bank. So part of the grant of the easement is that should the town go forward with respect to putting in a pedestrian path, the town would have the responsibility for the construction, maintenance, and repair of the pedestrian path. I understand that there were discussions way back when with the land bank, and at that time, they didn't go forward in terms of having a joint effort to actually build a path. It would be my intention that if this easement is accepted, that I start negotiations with the land bank in order to be able to come to an agreement as to the actual splitting of the cost of the construction of the path itself. It is staff's recommendation and the review of Town Council as such that we recommend the acceptance of the easement for the public pedestrian, because it provides public benefit. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ken. Any questions for Ken?
Yeah, I guess I have one, Ken. So is this connecting on either end? To other public paths?
It connects... It provides an access on one end. I'm not sure exactly which one it was. But the idea there is to be able to provide access to all of this land that the path is between this property and land that's owned by the land bank. So I hope that answers your question.
Kind of. From the picture, it looked like it was... It ran the length of this one side, unless I'm looking at it wrong. Yeah, let me look. Maybe I'm looking at it wrong. Yeah.
It is up... It is on that one side. That is correct.
Right.
Yep.
So on the right, it's connecting to a proprietor's road.
Right.
Is that you... Is that proprietor's road used? Is that...
I don't know the answer to that question, Matt. I'm sorry.
No, I mean, I'm in favor of this. I'm in favor of doing it. But what I want to make sure is that the town isn't promising to take care of a path that's wholly within a new subdivision and isn't really accessed by the public. If it's connecting, if it's connecting to the proprietor's road, and then it's connecting to another path, and everyone's using it, and it's easy for the DPW or whoever to get in and do it, that's great. But if it's sort of tucked away, I don't... I want to make sure we understand the ramifications first.
Unfortunately, I do not have the answer to your question.
Vicki?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the... What I'd like to point out is that the... First of all, the special permit that was granted for this subdivision required this access to be included, to provide public access to this particular lot, Lot 30, which is a rather sizable area. But it also has two spurs that are shown on this plan. It's hard to see it on this plan, but there are two spurs which now run and connect with the land bank property. So that is ultimately going to provide additional access to the land bank property as well. So I think that there will be sufficient public access to be able to get to additional open space as well.
Does that help a little bit, Matt?
A little bit. I think Dawn might have the answer in her other role.
Just for example, I do know that this access is used a lot by people who live off of South Shore, like off of Rachel Drive and some of... and Korea. They come in here to get to Maya Comet or to sled in the winter sometimes. So it is providing a real benefit.
Awesome. I'm in. I'm in.
Thank you for always checking on those things, Matt. I think... Let me look again. Did I see a hand up? Peter Halli, did you have your hand up for this agenda item? I didn't know if it maybe was left up from before. Yeah. If you check with Peter first. Peter, can you hear us? Did you have your hand up for this agenda item? Okay, can we go to Sarah?
Hi. I was just going to try to answer your question. I think Vicki Marsh did a pretty good job, but there are two spurs on the... Well, actually, three spurs. One that connects to the proprietor's road and two that connect to the land bank property. I understand the town may turn the easement over to the land bank in which event I think it will be made part of their path program once they decide what they're doing to that property to the south. I don't know if that helps, but I think that's the idea.
Yeah, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Like I said, thanks for always checking and asking those questions, Matt. Anyone else on this?
I'm happy to make a motion to approve it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. That passes 4-0. I want to accuse them. Thank you. Let Dawn come back. Up next is Request for Approval and Execution of Acceptance of a Deed in Bill of Sale and License Agreement for 10 and 12 Washington Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the completion of the purchase of the Greenhound property, the Bus Transit Center. The purchase price is indicated in the package. It is just under $5,475,000. This is very key to, in fact, our communications plan and our plan with respect to the future development of Harbor Place. And I'm really very pleased and ask... Want to give recognition to remain to being very, very cooperative and really working with the town to make this happen at a price that can work in the best interest of the town. Therefore, this was approved by town, a voted town meeting in 22 Annual Town Meeting. And so I would recommend that you move forward to approve and execute the Acceptance of Deed as well as the Bill of Sale and the Assignment of License Agreements and the Settlement Statement to be executed. Happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Ken. Any questions? Brooke?
I'll just make one comment that the food pantry's tenancy there is protected in this sale. I've asked that question before it went through. So I just want the public to know that the food pantry is safe where they are for now.
You're absolutely correct. The food pantry lease goes for a period of two years, and the rent is a monumental sum of $1.
Thanks, Ken. Anybody else?
I'm happy to make a motion to approve, and I'd like to give thanks to Ken for his role in helping us negotiate this. I think it's a tremendous purchase for the town. Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. Thank you, Ken.
The third item on the agenda is the approval of the Conservation Restriction from the Nantucket Conservation Foundation to the Nantucket Land Council. And Vicki Marsh is on here, and she has opined that this is in the public benefit. This is a complicated transaction, so I'd ask Vicki to make a few comments on it because she can simplify it. But it's something that we recommend going forward because it is in the public interest.
I would note also that Cormac Collier is on.
Yeah, I see Emily Moulden as an attendee as well. Vicki? You're muted. You're muted, Vicki.
This is a conservation restriction that is going to provide significant public benefit in that it's going to allow for the use of this property for passive recreation purposes. It's not going to be protected in the sense that it's not going to... It will allow for public access and use for educational activities as well. This property also is located in a particular area that has been cited as natural habitat areas and is also has vegetation in there that also meets requirements under the Natural Heritage Program. So I would recommend your consideration for approving this conservation restriction in the public interest. The town will not be holding the actual conservation restriction but just approving of it because this property is now going to be under the control of a nonprofit organization. Do you have any questions? I'm happy to address them.
Any questions for Vicki or Cormac? Cormac, did you have anything to add?
No, Mr. Chair. Happy to answer any questions as necessary.
Thank you. Pleasure, the Board.
Motion to approve? Second.
And to find it in the public interest.
And to find it in the public interest.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. Thank you, Cormac. Thank you, Vicki. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Town manager's report.
Okay, thank you. So update on Lover's Lane Road Improvement Project. I'm going to introduce John Osorio. He is of Greenman Peterson, Inc., GPI, the towns engineers for this project. And he is going to take us through a PowerPoint. Our presentation.
Good evening, everybody. As Libby said, my name is John Osorio. I am the Director of Highway Engineering for GPI. Been working on Lover's Lane for the past five years. Not sure if you're going to be sharing slides or?
John, do you want to share it yourself or I'm happy to do it on my end. I've got it ready.
If you want to bring it up, that would be great.
Okay, hold on.
So I'll be going through a, I wouldn't say it's a too quick of a presentation. I think, you know, it's, it's been a while since this has been presented to the board, so it'll be a bit.
Sorry, John, I just want to check. You guys can all hear in the crowd? It's, it's hard for me to hear it. If someone in control, I'm gonna just turn it up out here just a little bit.
And I adjusted on my side as well, so please let me know if this is better.
Did that increase? I think it did.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, go ahead. Thanks.
Perfect. Thank you. So again, this is a presentation of where we are with Lover's Lane Reconstruction. The images that you're seeing in front of you is actually a slide that shows Lover's Lane on the left side, Orkwa Ave in the middle, and Monahansett Road on the right side. The project actually started five years ago as an evaluation of all three roads. Since then, our scope has been more defined to concentrate on Lover's Lane Reconstruction. So the, the agenda for today is really to go over the scope of the work, how it started and where we are today, some existing conditions, project goals, project status, and then, you know, next steps with the project. Next slide. I'm sure you're all familiar with the area. So we were brought on board in January of twenty eighteen to provide engineering services for Lover's Lane, Orkwa Ave, and Monahansett Road. The original scope was providing existing ground survey for the two point three miles of roadway that are defined here in a bolder color along that stretch to provide a rough horizontal and vertical alignment and to begin, begin the public outreach related to that project. In December of that same year, twenty eighteen, GPI was contracted to advance the project development phase for each road. And then a conceptual design was prepared for those three segments. Just a little bit more info on public involvement. In February of twenty nineteen, there was a public information meeting that was held at the Public Safety Facility with the abutters and interested residents. The meeting was, was well attended at that time. The project was, was also pretty well received at that time. Generally speaking, there were concerns about speeding along the three segments and drainage issues throughout all three roadways. Based on public feedback from that meeting and the anticipated cost of construction, the DPW then determined to advance the design of Lover's Lane from Boulevard to Old South Road, which is about just over a mile, and to hold off on the Orkwa Ave and Monahansett Road improvements. So GPI was instructed to proceed with design and permitting of Lover's Lane. Next slide. I'm sure you're all familiar with, with all three roads. And again, I'll, I'll talk a little bit about the three roadways and then I'll concentrate a little bit more on Lover's Lane. But deficiencies along all these stretches, Lover's Lane, for most of the road is a gravel road. Surface very narrow. Orkwa Ave and Monahansett is a paved road with deteriorating, deteriorating pavement and stormwater issues throughout. There's lack of pavement striping, lack of signing. And, you know, one thing that the, the town is really looking to enhance is trail connectivity. There, there are no trail connections through these, through this neighborhood, actually. Next slide. So with respect to stormwater management or stormwater issues, I think you're all pretty familiar with Davcom Lane that, that connects to Lover's, Lover's Lane. That's been an issue for many years, constant flooding and ponding. I don't think that really, I don't think I've ever seen it without that issue. So that's, that's something that we're looking to, to fix with this project. On Orkwa Ave, picture in the middle that is near Skyline Drive. That's also a, a constant ponding issue. I think in recent years, they did relieve that a bit with some existing structures that were cleaned out, but I think that's still an issue to date. And then on the right side, you have pictures of Lover's Lane on the north end. Again, this is probably close to, this is close to Davcom Lane where it puddles into Lover's Lane. And then south, along Lover's Lane, south of Orkwa Ave, there's also, you know, segments. And this is kind of throughout Lover's Lane, segments of, of ponding. Next slide. So the way the DPW kind of manages stormwater issues these days on Lover's Lane on gravel road segment is with these infiltration trenches that are dug out. You've probably seen a few of these throughout the gravel road segment of Lover's Lane. It's constant maintenance and at this point, probably silted up and doesn't work as well. Next slide. So again, with existing conditions, with respect to trail connectivity, the image on the left is the Nantucket Multi-Use Path you're all familiar with. That can be found online. The town, you know, has done a tremendous job over the years maintaining and expanding trail networks throughout the island. Then neighborhoods around the airport, specifically from Surfside to Old South, lack trail connectivity and in some stretches rely on, you know, unsafe narrow roadway connections. I think the most recent trail that was constructed in that segment was Boulevard, which is probably dated by five or six years now. So one of the goals of the project is to provide safe trail connections throughout this neighborhood and to, and to provide better access, you know, to and from the center of town to, to the Nantucket Airport. And throughout the neighborhood. So project goals. So a quick reminder that the scope of work is specific to, you know, final, the final design of Lover's Lane. The goal of Lover's Lane is, is a much needed improvement of the roadway surface. To accomplish this, the roadway will undergo full depth construction. With hot mixed asphalt surface, the road will be widened from the existing, it varies, but there's sixteen feet in some areas to approximately twenty-two feet. At the edge of road, an asphalt berm is proposed to be installed to help with stormwater management. As for the stormwater improvements, the installation of drainage pipes throughout the entire stretch for Lover's Lane is proposed. And we're also proposing forty-four deep sump catch faces and twenty-seven manholes to, to manage the conveyance of stormwater for Lover's Lane. The proposed drainage infrastructure will direct flow to three separate infiltration systems. These are the outfalls that'll be located at low points along Lover's Lane. Excellent. So to date, we've submitted preliminary plans for Lover's Lane that they were submitted back November of, of twenty twenty-one. The town is currently reviewing and we've been having some ongoing discussions of how to move forward. Once we gather all comments and come to an agreement on the final scope of the project, we, we can advance to final design, complete the permitting and the right of way approvals that are needed. The plane in front of you shows the beginning of the project on the south end of Lover's Lane at its intersection with, with Boulevard. Again, we're tying into the more recent improvements on Boulevard and more recent, maybe five years ago. And then the trail that was constructed on that, on that stretch of Boulevard. The improvements for Lover's Lane will consist of, of a two lane, twenty-two foot wide roadway, a ten foot multi-use path proposed along the, the west side of Lover's Lane, which is the, the top of the page here, top side of the page. The majority of the utilities, which are electric and communication in this segment between Boulevard and Orkwa, is direct buried cable. So these utility lines will require relocation. Additionally, there are two smaller drainage infiltration outfalls that are proposed and they're located, you can see them on either side of White Street, which are represented by those green hatches. The project will also continue north past the intersection of Orkwa Ave. And we'll show that on the next slide. So yeah, so between Orkwa Ave and as far as really Nancy Inn Lane, which is not shown in this plan, the existing road is, is a narrow gravel road. In this segment, the proposed alignment will be hugging the west side of the available roadway layout. Lover's Lane has a very wide roadway layout, so we're taking advantage of that and hugging the, the top side of that, the, the west side. This section of Lover's Lane is in the vicinity of Camp Richards, which is up to Rugged Road there in the middle. And the state forest, which is managed by the Massachusetts Department of Recreation. Rugged Road is also shown with some improvements, but that'll remain a gravel road right up to the Camp Richards driveway. And that's really just needed for, for fixing the, the profile as it approaches Lover's Lane. So to the north of Rugged Road, you can, you can see that the multi-use trail continues, but it, it varies off into the state forest, providing a very wide vegetated buffer between the trail and the road. So approximately sixty to ninety feet, the distance between the trail and the road. An existing unmaintained gravel trail currently exists within the, the state forests. At this moment, DCR has reviewed the design and is willing to work with the town on the proposed trail as currently designed. Some additional improvements in this section of the plan is a much needed roadway and drainage improvement at Davcom. Just shown on the right side there, towards bottom of the, of the page. And a proposed drainage infiltration outfall located east of Rugged Road as shown again in the green hatching on the bottom opposite Rugged Road. Current negotiations are, are underway with that property owner for that, for that outfall. And those discussions have been ongoing for, for a few years. Existing utilities, again, electric and communication in this section of Lover's Lane is, is all overhead on utility poles. And it's all located on the eastern side of the road, which will not be impacted by, by these improvements. Excellent. So this brings us to the end of the project at the intersection of Old South Road. Lover's Lane roadway improvements will tie into the existing pavement in the vicinity of Nancy Inn Lane. They, access to the multi-use trail will be at the intersection of Old South Road. And we'll also be proposing safe pedestrian crosswalk accommodations to provide access to the Old South Road bike path, which runs up and down the page. Out of it's over. So next slide. So these, these next few slides are really just a, a typical section of what we're seeing on Lover's Lane and then some, some better renderings. Again, it's a twenty-two foot paved road with asphalt berm edges. And it's a multi-use path on the west side of Lover's Lane, separated by grass and vegetated buffer. This slide is, is more in the vicinity of the state forest, so you can see there's more separation right there. And then just to give you a better view of what, what this is, so you have Lover's Lane gravel road, very narrow. This is the current condition. And then your next slide is a nice finished product rendering showing maintaining a narrow road for, for traffic calming purposes, really. It's twenty-two feet. They're one foot shoulders. Ten foot lanes and one foot shoulders. And to, to maintain separation between the road and the multi-use trails is a goal. And, and again, we have more separation as we get into the state forest. And then again, providing that additional trail connectivity throughout the island and the neighborhood. Excellent. So as mentioned earlier, we won't spend too much time on this, but we did prepare and present to the public a conceptual design for Orkwa Ave and Monahansett Road. The limits for Orkwa are from Lover's Lane to Monahansett Road. And these are similar improvements to those shown along Lover's Lane, so it's a similar design. The next slide is showing Monahansett Road between Orkwa Ave and then the airport entrance. And we could certainly discuss these improvements, but we, we've only advanced this conceptual design and we're now moving forward with Lover's Lane. So this image is just a representation of the infiltration system. We can get into a little bit, the proposed at three outfall locations along Lover's Lane. The DPW is very familiar with these systems and provides maintenance of these systems throughout the, throughout the town. The largest of the three systems is proposed to be located on, on private property east of Rugged Road. This would require a permanent easement from two property owners. Discussions have been ongoing with the impacted property owners. Like I said earlier, for, for a few years now. These systems are located underground, so native plantings can be reestablished in these areas. The presence of these systems will not be noticeable once it's all constructed. And again, maintenance of these systems will be scheduled periodically and will be mainly conducted from the road. There will be an occasional need to, to get onto the property and inspect or clean. Intent is to minimize that. Next slide. The other two infiltration systems are located at the intersection of Lover's Lane and, and White Street near Orkwa Ave. These are smaller systems and they fit within the roadway layout. So no easements are required at this location for the infiltration. So utilities, as, as mentioned earlier, utility relocation will be necessary for the proposed roadway improvements. Majority of the utility work will be on Lover's Lane between Boulevard and Orkwa Ave. The picture on the left is looking south towards Boulevard. You can see the above ground utility boxes that are located throughout this section. The existing utility lines are direct burial cable in, in this segment of the road. And the picture on the right, you can somewhat make out an existing utility pole, maybe in between the trees. And Eric, I don't know if that's you that's controlling that, but thank you. There are some overhead wires there as well. This is representative of electric and communication wire north of Orkwa Ave. We are anticipating very minimal work to the utility lines in this stretch of the project. We have reached out to various utility companies throughout the years and we have a recent estimate from Comcast for their work and a potential cost savings if work is done in conjunction with, with National Grid. We have not received confirmation from National Grid yet, but, but we have had communication with them. With respect to Verizon, we have been coordinating with them, but we have not actually gotten any information back from them. So we'll continue to do some outreach there and maybe looking to the DPW to assist us with that. So we're not, we're struggling a little bit with Verizon.
Can I just note that I am involved with a monthly utility coordination meeting with all these companies? So I'm happy to bring this to our next meeting.
Thank you, Erica. So next slide. So with respect to permitting, permitting will be needed for the work in the state forests. We currently have a construction access permit application in with DCR and are coordinating a maintenance agreement between the town and the state for the multi-use path that'll be located in the state forest. This agreement is, is very similar to an existing maintenance agreement that's in place in the northern section of the state forest, which is better known as, I think, Pulpus Bike Path goes through that section of the state forest. Additional coordination will also be needed for work within the state forest with mass wildlife through their Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program, just to ensure that we are in compliance with, with MISA. And also with Mass Historical Commission for a review of potential impacts to historical and archaeological properties. However, we don't anticipate any delays due to this process. Excellent. So there will be a need for temporary and permanent easements to construct the project. The temporary easements are minimal in nature and are typically just for the purpose of, of grading and tying back into private property. These could also easily be handled through a right of entry agreement with the property owner. Again, they're very minimal. There are five permanent easements though. Two of these, we spoke about is for the infiltration, the larger infiltration system east of Rugged Road. Two other permanent easements are actually for work on private roads, which is Rugged Road and Davcom Road. And then one is more for clearing of vegetation and for site distance at the corner of Orkwa Ave and, and Lover's Lane. Outreach to all these property owners has happened over the years, but we will definitely need to continue those. Next slide. So finally, I think this is really what we wanted to talk about. The, the main topic here is, is the construction cost estimate and where we're at today. We have provided an update based on, which is in front of you, based on the latest bid prices. So this may be slightly different than what we submitted back November or the end of last year. A reminder that the estimates for Orkwa Ave and, and Monahansett Road are based on a, on a conceptual design. So these are determined more using a cost per foot analysis based on the Lover's Lane design and what we, what we're seeing the costs come in today. The Lover's Lane cost estimate is based on a preliminary design using Mastiot's bid items and, and latest bid prices. Mastiot's unit prices are further increased to represent the typical cost of construction on the island, which, which does range and increase quite a bit. We have provided, you know, a range of cost here for that reason. So you can see that the Lover's Lane preliminary cost estimate for the bid items ranges from, so that's that preliminary design estimate, six million to six and a half million. We then have utilities, and this is only based on some of the information that we've received to date and, and estimating what the rest could come in at, it's a hundred and forty to two eighty. And then we're early in the design stage, so we always have a, a design contingency that we like to carry just for, just to be sure. It's usually ranges from ten to, to twenty percent and that's represented there. And then once the project advances and design details are finalized, we, we, we can certainly eliminate the design contingency, but we're still pretty early in the preliminary stage. The total, total construction cost of Lover's Lane is, is in the range of six point four to eight million. Next slide. So it's, it's, it's my understanding that the approved construction funding for this project is approximately forty to fifty percent of the, the current cost estimate. I've heard a number of three and a half million, maybe. I believe the original cost estimate for Lover's Lane I believe the original cost estimate for Lover's Lane was determined early on in the concept phase of the project. At the time, it was anticipated that the project would be constructed within the, you know, initial two to three years of design. So we would probably be in construction or almost completing construction by now, the way we were thinking of it back then, five years ago. To help understand the increasing construction cost over the years, I I prepared an escalation factor that that represents the last five years, and I'm certainly not going to dig into the spreadsheet, but just to give you some highlights, this this was actually helpful, a helpful exercise for me, since this is an issue throughout the state for the past two to three years with, you know, with material shortages and labor shortages and the inflationary environment that we're in. The spreadsheet evaluates a number of typical construction items and operations that represents labor, materials, fuel, and it shows a growth that occurred year to year and then an average of the five years. So next slide. What we determined from from this exercise, again, this was pretty helpful, is is the average growth per year and the total growth over five years. Again, this is representative of Mastiot mainland prices. So Mastiot is currently experiencing the same problem when all their projects. What we're seeing is approximately a thirty to forty percent increase in cost from twenty eighteen, when this project first started to twenty-two. Additionally, we need to account for the cost of construction on the island. This is typically done by evaluating recent bids on the island, which which has been done. There aren't many projects to evaluate, but typically not too many bidders on these types of projects, so the data can can be limited. Next slide. So, you know, we've been asked for maybe ways to phase the the project. The easiest segment to separate as a standalone project would be the trail through the state forest. This project could be ready for construction as early as this winter or spring of twenty twenty-three. All we need to do is finalize the access permit and the maintenance agreement, which again is is should be ready to be resubmitted to DCR. Additional ideas that have been discussed is to phase the construction of the infiltration systems as one project and then the larger roadway construction as a separate project. This could be an option, but but should be done in consecutive years. The stormwater infiltration system would need to remain inactive until the full roadway construction was completed. So that said, drainage is typically one of the first operations in a roadway construction project, so it's not unreasonable to to split those two phases, but you definitely want to be planning for the roadway construction soon after the infiltration system, if you were to split those two tasks out. So this is this is my final slide. Next steps, Lover's Lane. Preliminary design, this is, this was submitted November of twenty twenty-one. Again, we have been communicating with the town frequently and often. We're just awaiting comments and direction on how to take this to final design. DCR permitting. We're awaiting the maintenance agreement, which is in the town's hands for final review. Has already reviewed, so we're we hope to get that finalized soon. And then we can finalize that access permit process. And then with respect to environmental permitting, we have those permits ready to be submitted. And again, we're just waiting direction on how the projects can move forward so that we by the seat. With that, I can open it up to questions. I apologize if that took a little long.
Thank you for that. That review. Good.
I just wanted to do a little bit of follow up. So we have met a couple of times on this with GPI and unfortunately, the cost is a serious concern because we do not have the money to do the full project, as you can see. So we've tentatively added a supplemental request to fiscal twenty-four's capital so far. We're in the very early stages of putting together the fiscal twenty-four capital projects. Meanwhile, this Dave Kim Lake is not going away anytime soon. It is on entirely on private property. There have been a couple of times when the town collaborated a little bit with Richmond to get it gone, but there's not a good place to put that water. And we don't have property. We don't have a lot of property on either side of Lover's Lane, which is why some of those easements are necessary, as John pointed out. So it it is an issue. And there's no good, quick answer to it. I know there's probably some people here who will have some comments about it. And we're really just trying to sort out how are how are we going to do this? We discussed and maybe, John, you could you may need to elaborate on this a little bit more. We talked about, could we get the drainage in first? But that was quickly kind of shot down for engineering reasons, that it's just not feasible to do the engineering, to do the drainage first. So we're in a bit of a dilemma without additional money and we're not talking about a little bit of money.
So, Libby, are you saying that the phased, the last slide he showed with the the phased, that would not work doing the like the bike path in the state forest and the, which would be like two, two and a half million in the drainage?
Well, the I think what John was saying was the the trail could happen.
Yep.
But I don't think the trail, the trail has really nothing to do with the drainage. And I don't know if the trail is priority number one, really.
And the issue with the drainage is that if it continues to be a dirt road, all of that silt is going to go into the drainage system. It's going to clog it up. It's going to ruin it.
That's what I was asking. Why? Why couldn't we do the drainage?
It doesn't. It it it's contradictory to to the whole project because you're going to ruin the drainage before you even get the road in.
Got it. Brooke.
I mean, what I'm thinking is that the the logic of phasing this is using the money that's been allocated to start the project at current construction costs rather than waiting to do the whole thing and having the whole price rise. So if we commit to the whole project, they think what they're saying is they could put the drainage in, but not connect, not make it open to taking water until the road's completed. And then we can go raise the capital for the road or the to complete the project, but it gets us started at construction costs that are only going to go up over time if we wait on the whole thing. To spend the money we have to start it.
Yeah. John, do you want to elaborate a little bit on that?
No, that's absolutely correct. If there is a plan for the final roadway construction, you could phase out the infiltration. That is an easy part of the project that that can be separated out. You just, it just, it will be inactive until that road is is paved. Just to add a little bit more to Davcom, the discussion on Davcom, at the time, the DPW wanted to try to keep the outfall at one location. Again, the intent was to build the whole thing all together as one as one project. You know, there was talks about potentially using the the Nantucket Disc Golf parking as an area because that is actually town property. So we can always look at that further if there's a quicker need to alleviate Davcom. But I just wanted to throw that out there. That was an early discussion, but then was was basically canceled because we wanted to do this all as one project.
John, I think I'm going to say there is a need to revisit that sooner rather than later.
And this was, if I remember this, all the drainage was talked talked about when we were dealing with Richmond and the neighbors came to us then and said, this is an issue. This is something that should be dealt with. You know, through that whole process. So this is not a surprise, and I'm not saying it's Richmond's responsibility, but this is been another one of those problems that's been, you know, has has gotten worse. As we've done more, there's more water, there's more runoff, and it's it's gotten worse. A couple of my thoughts, if you're looking for comments, I think we're building you know, a road that's wider than our current milestone road, two eleven-foot lanes plus berm. That's, you know, a couple of feet bigger than milestone. I think Tacoma is about twenty here. That's going to be a straight shot. There's no, the houses are all off the street. There's no houses on one side. I think we are going to be building a raceway there. Because it's a long, straight shot. I'm not saying we don't have to improve it or do something there, but I think, you know, everyone that wants it improved might be kind of surprised in the end when what we've got is a suburban raceway that what are we going to do? Put police on both sides all day long? It's a major cut through. So I would like to be thinking, how else could we do it to keep the speed down, you know, not to be designing things that are going to be sort of that are going to, it shouldn't surprise us that we do if we do this, what we're going to receive. And so that's number one. Number two, in May, I sent everybody a the root of local government revenues. It was a rethinking the intersection of planning and boosting revenue. This is the, this is an on-island example of what that study was talking about, where we need to understand the costs per acre, the cost per area, etc., before we do it, because then we're stuck and we think that we are, we're going to be doing, we think that, oh, we can grow our way out of it, except that we're growing and we're not, and it's costing us more money to grow, so we'll grow more and it's going to cost us even more money. So I so I think this is, this is the result of that. I think that, you know, the 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 old patterns, density and town areas, those old patterns were efficient. From, you know, from a tax revenue standpoint, from a, you know, being able to take care of it standpoint, and we are now sort of you know, we're densifying the outlying areas. We're adding more density to the outlying areas. They're still spread way apart, and I think we're gonna, this is going to get worse unless we start to really look at these things. You know, look at those changes and the impacts of those changes before we get to it. You know, and so that's why I sent that to you guys. I sent it to, you know, I sent it to the planning board. I sent it to the Conco. I sent it to the finance committee members. I just think it's, we've got to start looking at this. I don't know how we as a community are going to be able to afford eight million dollar roads, you know, everywhere that lead us to more problems. I I so I don't have the answer, but I know that it's, you know, when you looked at the two pictures, I love the old picture of the dirt road. I look, I look at that and say, why are we? Why are we building milestone on Lover's Lane? I, we have no choice. We probably put ourselves that way, but I, looking at it from a planning perspective, I think we should be thinking about from the mid-island to the airport. Should we should be thinking that as as urban? And I think over time, the area that the density that goes in there, it should be an urban density with sidewalks and things that slow cars down, lots of connections, not just, you know, three or four main raceways. I think that is, you know, that is, I think, how we have to plan. And I don't think that we're, I think we're sort of trying to lay, we're trying to layer on suburban planning as we densify into an urban area, and we aren't ever really considering the costs. So there's my, I'm on my pulpit. Sorry.
Any other board members?
This has been talked about for a really long time and the one thing I know is it doesn't get any cheaper to do stuff. And the only thing that I would say in terms of the plan, and this is a very nitpicky and small thing, is to make sure that there's cut through access to the recessed path from the neighborhoods where kids are going to be coming out and accessing this so that they don't have to go to one end or the other of that recess pass to to access it, and that's just a minor thing.
Well, you're actually bringing up, sorry, you were bringing up a fairly major thing. Is that if if this is a raceway and the kids are trying to get across, this they have to slow that down somehow so the kids can cross at the various places. You know, I think there's things like that that we have to start.
Yeah, yeah. Those are going to be some of my comments that I appreciated your analysis of the width of the road, Matt. I I also like the vista of the the dirt road, and I like the rural nature of some of the aspects of that neighborhood. And so if there was a way to keep traffic slow there, I think that's got to be something that we look at. And I am concerned about making sure there's crosswalks and berms or something that's going to keep cars moving slow. It's really not that long of a road. I walk there often, and it's terribly dangerous to walk right now. But we don't want to make cars go faster through Lover's Lane. We want to improve the process. But I'm I'm also with you, Brooke, and I'm not sure what direction we're town administration's looking for tonight, but costs aren't going to go down. So if there is a feasible way to start phasing this in, I I think it's really prudent for us to to do that and get started with something now. And I think some improvement of that road, even if it's just for pedestrians right now, will have a tremendous impact on the quality of life of the residents in that neighborhood. So those are some of my thoughts right now.
John, anything before we go to public?
I mean, we've been talking about this, as as Brooke said, for many years and and trying to start to move this project forward. I mean, it's a really unfortunate thing that happened in that entire neighborhood where there were never any HOA for the road improvements, and that's more towards like Okaawa. And I mean, luckily, that's been that's been corrected in the planning process for many years since. And we've kind of been left with having to deal with it because it's a, it's a significant area of the island that's that's pretty heavily used. Some of the most popular beaches are this way. But I I want to at least move forward the path and I I do think that we need to get this done. I think that it might be wise to do something where there's like raised crosswalks that work as speed humps. We should look at that, but those are my thoughts for now.
Thank you. And I think there could be strategic speed tables put in that's not right next to all the houses, so they don't hear the the dong, the dong, right? It could be put in that's safe, but not right in front of houses throughout there. So I think that's, that is not as much a concern for me, as long as it's thought out and and planned. Does anybody here in the public like to speak? Please come up. Yep, you come right up. And I see Mary Long here's hand. I'll get to you, Mary.
My name is Sandy Schultz, and my husband and I are the owners of Thirty-Two Lover's Lane, which just so happens to be on the corner of Dave Kim and Lover's Lane. We purchased the property this February fourteenth of two thousand and two. It's been a long time. We purchased a house on a dirt road. We love living on a dirt road. However, the growth of Nantucket, the changes with the grading of the road on a regular basis. There's been a lot of factors. You know, Dave Kim, up until about two thousand and fourteen, actually drained, at least in the summertime. The two drains are full of silt. They have failed. There's there's probably no way to fix them. But I would like to say and go on record that from the, probably about two months after we bought our house that year in two thousand and two, the water that it now is in in Dave Kim was in our basement. We deal with flooding there on a regular basis. We put hundreds of thousands of dollars into landscaping. Our whole front yard is a dry well. We have managed with a berm and trees and all that stuff to keep the water out unless we have, you know, a really significant rain. But in the past five years since Lover's Lane has been a discussion for paving and previous DPW directors, you know, in looking at trying to solve some of the issues there, have put hardener in the road and they've raised the road. And so now Lover's Lane is much higher than Dave Kim. And that is one of the reasons why Dave can, in my opinion, can't drain. And the culverts and things that were dug into the into the forest aren't taken care of, and so they have filled in with dirt. And since Shepley has built at the end of Lover's Lane and that specific piece of pavement was expanded around that area, the drain that was nicely put in there was the high point. And so when it rains, we get rain from Old South Road down Lover's. It goes right around the drain at Shepley. It continues to go down Lover's Lane. If you happen to to take a look at the property, the parking lot at the state forest, you'll notice all these gullies in it because that is also a high point. So the rain drains out of there, comes down Lover's Lane, and now for the past five or six years down our driveway. And so every time it rains, every time we have a hard rain like May fourth, we have to have our driveway rebuilt. It's just really been, it's become a really big problem. And I understand, Matt, what you've said about, you know, infrastructure and, you know, all that and and building roads. Lover's Lane really hasn't changed. In the past five years, we've had two houses built there, and there's currently In the past five years, we've had two houses built there, and there's currently one house at the end that's, that's under construction. So it's not an area where people have, have built a lot of properties and, and put covenant homes or anything like that. You know, these are, these unfortunately are low points, you know, the, of the east side of Lover's Lane is, is just very low. And so anything that happens, when the DPW grades, if they, if they, if the grader is in the wrong direction, I mean, we know we're gonna be flooded. The road this time of year is, is maintained quite well. In the winter, it's a different story. I mean, we've had a lot of maintenance on our cars and, and, and all that throughout the years. But it's just, you know, the Dave Kim issue is huge. And right now, just so you know, it is barricaded. And we have a lovely duck family that's living in there, and we have a canoe. So, you know, and, and I will tell you, a lot of mosquitoes. And so the question is, is it a health issue? You know, that, that's the other issue that we have. We've caught neighbors, not from Lover's Lane, but, but back that rent, draining oil into that puddle. We've had, we've had issues with someone septic into that puddle. There's just been a lot of issues. And I think, you know, for the past 20 years, we've been very patient, waiting to see what's gonna happen. The previous DPW director was very active in coming to our property and, and, you know, asking us, you know, what do you, you know, what are your thoughts? Do, you know, do you wanna live on a paved road versus a dirt road? And, and the answer to that question is, I don't care anymore. You know, we bought a house in a dirt road, but, you know, it, if it needs to be paved for the infrastructure of the island and the cut through, because, you know, since Waze and, and GPS, we notice a lot more traffic. As a matter of fact, this morning, I will tell you, between 7:15 and 8:30, there were 55 cars that went by. And those 55 cars did not go slowly. People are traveling down that rate, that road at 40 and 50 miles an hour, as it is now. And Melissa, thank you for saying that it's not safe. I've been hit on that road with my dog, you know, just a, you know, shoulder of a, of a, of a mirror, but still, you know, it's, it's a lovely road, and it's one of, it's an old road. I mean, it's been a town road for many, many, many years. But something does need to be done, it needs to be fixed. The Dave Kim issue started with Walter Glawacki, and, you know, Richmond inherited it, and, you know, and, and we, we do the best we can to deal with it, but we can't leave our, we can't leave our property. We can't go away on a vacation without hiring someone to come stay at our house. And I'm sure it's the same for the neighbors on the other side. You know, the, the two of us on the corner really have an issue and a problem. So I thank you for that, and just please take that in consideration as you make your decisions about how you're moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you for that feedback. Anybody else here speak? Can we go to Mary Longacre?
Thank you, Jason. Mary Longacre, I'm wondering, with the funds that are already allocated, could the project be split into a south end and a north end, and the funding used to construct one end or the other, and perhaps maybe the bike path for safety reasons? That might be a way to move forward, to accomplish something, and to still stay within the money that's available at the moment. Hopefully, then you'd also have the momentum to get the funds for the rest of the project. I just thought I'd offer that suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. That's, that's what I was gonna ask, at, at some point, you know, I don't know how much three and a half million gets us from, how far does it get from South Shore Road down Lover's Lane? With the drainage, how far does that go? It's probably not a smart way of doing it. Yeah, John, what do you think?
Yeah, some, definitely something to look into. The south side might be more doable, but the north side is where the need currently is with the vacuum. But we can certainly try to break out, it's really watershed areas and what's contributing to the outfalls, and try to see what can be done, what, what, how much of Lover's Lane can be done on the north end, and if we can cover the whole gravel road.
Yeah, if you get a third of the way down or, or half the way down, it takes care of the north side with the drainage, kinda back to what Brooke was saying.
Right.
Matt?
Yeah, I think that's a, yeah, I think that's a good suggestion in the situation we're in, 'cause it's been a long time. You know, I think that's a good suggestion. And I would just like to be, us to be thinking about the width and, you know, what, what are we really trying to do there as we plan it? I just don't wanna, you know, sort of make it worse for everybody.
I, I thank you so much, and I think the comments we heard from the public tonight are just reiterates making, what, doing what we can from an engineering perspective to slow things down on that road. It's a popular cut through for larger vehicles that can tolerate the, the bumps and, you know, the things that happen in the, in the winter. And let's face it, the traffic on Old South Road is horrible. And so if I've got a four-wheel drive vehicle, and I'm trying to get to the other side of the island, I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut through Lover's. And so I think, you know, John, whatever you guys can do in terms of the phasing, but also taking that into consideration, I think is, is critically important to the safety in that area.
For sure. And I, I mentioned in the presentation, the public information meeting, that was one of the primary concerns, was, was speeding. We have talked about raised intersections, but I think we still need to work that out with, with the town, just to understand the right location for them, as you all said.
Libby, I know this was just an update, but is there some direction you're wanting from the board or support for town meeting supplements or?
Well, I think, yeah, we wanted to definitely get support for the supplement, so I, I think I'm hearing yes. And to continue to examine some of these options that we talked about tonight, like, could there be an interim solution to drainage at the Disc Golf parking lot? Can the road be narrower? And what are the, we did talk the other day about some traffic calming solutions and raised crosswalks and speed tables were a part of that. So we can certainly look at that. And the idea of kinda splitting it in half and doing one half first, I, I'm, I'm sure GPI can look into that. So we, so I guess the, what we get, what I, what we're hearing is proceed in some fashion with the trail and the drainage at minimum, and look into these other things and see what can be done on an interim level with the drainage and what it might take to pave half the road first.
On the north end, like, really, what does three and a half million get from Old South Road down with drainage and the road? So whatever has to work together to solve the drainage issues. And if a bike path can be in there, great. If not, I think that can, of course, I'm, I'm the bike path guy, I want the bike path, but not with the issues there with, you know, even the mosquitoes, I didn't even think about that, so.
Yeah, I, I think just whatever we can, whatever the engineers can develop with the budget that we have, and then bring us some options for what that phase looks like. You know, I, I hesitate to put too many restrictions or caveats on that, sort of like, here's the money we have, you understand the problems we're facing, what can we get?
The north side, right. Go ahead, Brooke.
But I, but I'd like to reiterate that I, that I'd like to move the entire project If that's supplemental funding requests at the next town meeting, I would be in favor of that.
Same here. Same.
Yeah, at one point, there was a discussion about the, the width of the road when it was first proposed to the neighbors. And, and something that had came about at that point in time was calling it, paving it under the terms of a forest road. Whereas, you know, the state forest is right there, and a lot of forest access roads are narrower, and you have the speed bumps. And so I don't know if that's, I, I don't know road widths, I'm not educated on that, but I don't know if that was something that was still of, of, of mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Good.
Do people park along that road?
I, I've never seen it. We'll ask the residents.
I mean, I guess my concern-
On the shoulders of the Disc Golf entrance, they do.
Yeah, especially when there's a golf tournament there. But other than that, no.
Okay, thank you.
Can we go to Rick Atherton? Miss his hand up. Sorry, John, give me one second.
Jason, thank, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
You know, I think one thing the board ought to really think through in this issue, it reminds me a little bit of Nobodir Farm Road, probably 10 years ago, when after significant development occurred along the road, the town had to pay to fix the drainage issues, and the planning process somehow didn't fix them as people developed along that road. I think the select board might be wise to think through why, why did that happen there? And it sounds to me there's somewhat of a similar issue here. Over time, development around Lover's Lane has impacted that road, and with the proper considerations of the impact of that development considered in your town processes. So I think that might be helpful for you as a select board to ask some questions about and make sure that whatever's available impacts properly other roads and situations around Nantucket. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Brooke.
I would really have to disagree with Mr. Atherton with regards to the development around that road. Dave Kim especially has been unpassable. So it, there's, anything coming from the Richmond property can't get down through there. We also have Gregland and those other roads that were, you know, Glawacki roads and have been there forever. Again, we're, we're not seeing a lot of traffic from, from that end or any development that there, because people are living there. It really truly is people trying to cut through from Old South Road, whether or not they're coming from Sconset or wherever else. I mean, they, they come that way, they go down Lover's Lane, they go down the boulevard, because they're trying to get to Barlet's Farm and avoid the rotaries.
I have a question while you're there. Where does the water that comes from Shepley come from, start?
It starts, it really starts from Old South Road.
Yeah, so it comes old south, down, around the drain, and then right into you.
Yeah. Now, for some reason, that I don't know and understand, this spring, that, that part of Lover's Lane was repaved. And I've asked a couple of neighbors as to why, and no one really seems to know why. They did make some changes to the drain, but still, it's, it's, it's really not catching the water. So that would be, I, I don't think, an easy fix, but we really get a lot of runoff from the parking lot at the state forest.
Thank you. John, you had your hand up. You were gonna-
Yes, I just wanted to add, with respect to the Disc Golf parking lot, we, we have had many discussions with, with the Disc Golf folks. Have expressed concern about parking during some of their events that does spill into Lover's Lane, and have offered to provide funding to expand their parking. So that, that was thrown on the table, it might have been last year at some point. So just something that you all should know.
Thank you, John.
Well, that, that brings up a good thought, because maybe what, what wants to happen there is sort of some on-street parking that's used for overflow, 'cause that does slow vehicles down. If there's cars there, cars will slow down, because they don't wanna hit a parked car. They don't slow down if there's, you know, if there's, if there's nothing there, it's the view, it's sort of, you know, if there are trees or buildings close to the street or vehicles parked, they'll slow down. But if it's anything else, they don't. I also think the plan that we saw with the, sort of the, you know, sort of the berm in between, like, sort of the grain space, that's where cars will park. If, if that's designed there, you know, that's what happens, you know, sort of around the island, you know, that's what's happening. Oh, by Surfside, they end up being parking areas. And, you know, and we've got people going to town meeting, saying they don't want it to just turn into mud baths. So I think that we have to sort of think it through, and maybe there is something that goes there that does both things, you know, that takes care of the, of the overflow parking and slows the vehicles, and we just bake that into the plan, rather than just a straight shot with, with no parking signs all along it.
Anybody, any other comments? Libby, anything else you need from us?
I was just gonna try a little wrap-up. So next steps would include examining interim drainage improvements, paving half the road with the available funds, starting at the north end, construction of a paved multi-use path, construction of a drainage system that could be installed but not activated until the road is fully paved, and proceed with supplemental funding in the fiscal '24 capital plan.
I, I would say yes. I don't know if it's paving half the road, it's paving as far as we could go from-
With available-
I still wanna make sure anybody thought, like, oh, we can't do it, 'cause we can't make half, but maybe you can make, if it's 40% or 33. Anybody good with that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Sandy Day, for speaking tonight. It's very helpful. Thank you for your patience, many years, and working with the town, and, and did I say patience? Yeah, patience. Okay, there's monthly town manager reports, we move to later date, select board reports and comments. We can go right into discussion on short-term rental group, work group facilitator services. Yes, yeah, yeah, we'll, can you report to be at the end? We're gonna move to number two, since we all can talk now, all five of us. So I think tonight is our, our decision is what do we wanna do with facilitator? Do we wanna pick one and send it to the, the pre-group? Do we wanna make a recommendation?
So yesterday and today, I received some additional information, as you had discussed last week, from the facilitators, and they weren't able to get into the packet, 'cause they came in late, but I emailed it all around, and I think, are they, or? Yeah, there was one more consensus building institute. It was a, it was a link, it wasn't documents. Yeah, I'll email it to you right now.
Has anyone met these facilitators and had conversations with them and?
We've met, a lot of us have met one facilitator, but not about this.
Yeah.
Yeah, not.
Yeah, I mean, I've worked with Judy Barrett. And I also, were you, were you guys able to read the supplemental information on, I've read through both of them.
I was only able to get a glance at both of them before I got to the meeting this evening, so I haven't been able to digest it, so it's kind of curious, you know, has there been an interview, or will there be an interview? Are we, do we have a set of questions? I, I know that Matt has had some comments that he felt were important to him in terms of criteria for the facilitator access to information, so just curious. It'd be hard for me to make a recommendation on either one of them, just based on the information we got. So I think it would be prudent to have an interview and conversation with them, but-
Who would you wanna interview? Libby and, or Brooke and I? 'Cause we're the CR group or?
I think so. That would make sense to me, so long as, you know, the, the questions were, I think, representative of the comments of the board, and we've given, I think, you've heard that direction or those concerns raised. Matt can certainly speak for himself, but I know that he had some comments about, you know, what was important to him, and I think you guys know that, so I'd be more than comfortable having you two interview him.
I'm, I'm fine with that. I mean, I would say, I read through both packets pretty thoroughly, and, I mean, both have impressive credentials, experience. I would say the one thing that stood out is that Judy Barrett has experience writing zoning articles, whereas the other group has a lot of public policy experience, but doesn't have that land use and zoning, you know, expertise that might be critical at the end of the road for this. That was sort of the distinction for me, but both, you know, from what's on paper, I, I don't, it seems we couldn't, we wouldn't go wrong either direction, but it would be interesting to take it a step further and meet with them, and maybe ask the, the other vendor that I don't know more about sort of that part of it, because I know that's an expertise that Judy has.
Yeah. I would 100% agree with that, and I think the, you know, I love to sort of work backwards, so although we don't know exactly, we don't, we don't have an outcome, but we know that we want to bring something to town meeting, and sort of getting it conversationally from them, how they envision the process, I think will give you and Jason a lot of insight into- into how they'll work with the group. Um, so I, I think that would be important um, to hear beyond just what we see on paper before we make a recommendation.
Right, I only, I've only read the Barrett stuff. I haven't read the other. I didn't either see, I may have missed it or I didn't click the link or I didn't get it.
I sent it out about eight oh two this morning. Um, but I know, you know, that's right if everybody's day is starting and stuff. So, so, um, I'm hearing that, what is it, a couple of you wanna inter- interview them a little bit? Okay. So maybe we can talk, um, tomorrow and figure out when to do that, cause they're both fairly available, I think. And, um, I think they're both very qualified and very, um, knowledgeable. They, they both have municipal experience.
Yeah, something else that we've talked about here is we also, from the facilitator standpoint of a, it's a very touchy issue, lots of opinions. We need a Arcadis-type approach that knows how to facilitate and like make sure that everybody feels heard, but also can be really professional and, you know, stop here and there, move and.
Also, we have to gather the facts. And I think that, you know, that's my own, that's so, sort of to what Melissa's talking about. We have to figure out what facts, you know, we have to figure out what facts have to be gathered. If we need more during the process, they need to be gotten. And we need to make sure we're basing this on facts, not on opinions, not on people's perception. I think it's, you know, for it to have, so that's my concern is having subject matter expertise. You know, if these guys don't have it, how do we pull it? Some of it's gonna come from Neyrab for sure. Some of it's gonna be here on island. But, you know, if there's examples of places that have done well, that are similar to us, that have done things that have worked, we wanna, I wanna make sure that they're inserted into the process, that we aren't just kicking our own ideas around at each other for, you know, nine months and then doing the same thing at town meeting again. You know, if there are, if there's a better way to do it, then let's find that way over, let's make sure that this process enables that to emerge.
I was gonna say, I don't necessarily think the facilitator has to have the knowledge in their head, but they have to be able to bring it in and get it, whether it's Granicus, Neyrab, and the third party that they supplement in, a, a third-party expert.
Yeah, I was just, I was gonna say absolutely that, you know, it'll be impossible to find somebody, you know, one person or one group with all of that information. But also having the ability to get the group to consensus to move forward, cause the last thing we wanna do is, and I mean this in the best way possible, after hearing what we heard tonight, is circle the drain. Um, you know, just go round and round and round in conversation and not move forward. So being able to get the group to identify what's the information that they need, um, getting that information, you know, moving along through the consensus process is, you know, is an art in and of itself. So I, I think it would be great for you two to, you know, have a conversation with both and, and, um, you know, let us know your thoughts on, on that. Um, and, you know, again, you said it on paper, it's, they're almost indistinguishable. And so it, I think without that benefit of a conversation, it's too hard for me to make a recommendation on who the best, um, fit would be.
Yeah, I mean, I think it will be really important to hear your pers- perspective on who's the best person to really move, I mean, move this forward because it's, it's a tight timeline. And it's a very contentious issue. And if there's really going to be something appropriate to bring to town meeting, I mean, we've gotta know that by January. Um, that's, um, that's not easy in govern- government to get something ready for that, um, in this, um, this big of a.
And I think it's more important to do it right than it is to do it fast. So if it takes us a little longer, we're gonna have, be gaining information. We've got, you know, we've already got that started, you know, coming, beginning this year. So if it takes a little longer, as long as everyone knows that it's being truly worked on, I think that, you know, things will be fine.
I agree. And that was just gonna be my comment was that I think it's great to have a goal of getting something to town meeting for 2023. But so long as we're making progress in the conversation, um, that, you know, if for something, some reason it takes longer, I think that's okay, as long as we're demonstrating the effort to the community that this is moving forward. And I think with that, um, I, I didn't, um, read the reports thoroughly, as I said, but, um, what is, I think we should have some plan for how this group is reporting back to the community or to, through the select board meeting, if it's periodic updates. Um, because having the community have their finger on the pulse of, and I know these are all public meetings and so on and so forth, but there's nothing quite like an update at a select board meeting for it really going on the record about where this committee is moving forward. So I think that's just really important to build into future agendas.
Thank you, Melissa. Any other comments on this? Brooke and I will get on that, work with Libby on setting those up. Hope we have it all done. Back to, see our next, we have a meeting, uh, August 3rd and the 17th. We need, I think we would need to decide by then.
I'm sorry, Siggen.
August 3rd and August 17th are our next two meetings. So we would need to, I think that'd be a good goal to have that figured out by then. So in September, assuming that they could even start in September.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we do have an appointment process that we're gonna have to sort out in terms of advertising and that. And,
yeah, this isn't gonna start before September for sure. And we're gonna be lucky if it starts in September. With, with the appointments and the, the committee appointment process and the advertising and the.
I was just gonna ask it, where we, I mean, can those things happen in tandem and are, are they? I just, I, I'm not clear on what the appointment process is. When do we wanna get those notices out and so on and so forth?
The pre-group is meeting again on August 3rd, I believe, to finalize the framework. And once that is done, is it, I think it comes back here?
I think then it would go out if we, if we finalize the process.
So I think that's a good question. Is there an interim step where the three boards have to approve the framework? Or are the designees in the pre-group authorized to finalize it and, and make, and make it final? And we should probably.
I would say the designees, the, the, that's my opinion, or we're just gonna go, like, we're not, we're not gonna get started till January.
Circle the drain.
Yeah, I, I would agree. I'm comfortable with the six of us with the feedback we've gotten.
Needs to decide, but if you're looking for consensus or a motion from this board to say we authorize our designees to move that forward, I'm happy to make that motion tonight. Um, and maybe the finance committee and planning board need to, to do that themselves, to empower their designees to make, you know, otherwise we, it'll never.
Right, it's three more meetings that it has to go through.
You're undermining the Nantucket way. That's what we do really well. We fight for years. Come on, Melissa.
How about we build some efficiency into this?
Although, was it kind of left that, I mean, all of the boards have now put their comments in. There wasn't really anything that was conflicting, I don't think. And so I, I guess now I'm sort of rethinking. I think the pre-group was meant to finish it off and then just authorize town admin to proceed with the advertising.
Yeah. To me, that would make no sense.
As long as it doesn't change substantially from what we've sort of agreed on, I think we're good.
I don't think it will. Yeah. I'm good with that.
August 3rd and there's a meeting for the, the pre-group. So on August 17th, we could have an agenda item just for, if we don't need to talk about anything, we don't have to, but at least it's there. Just do a recap.
And we can update committee reports that night, too.
All right, we good there? All right, thank you. Committee reports? Last, lasting comments?
Nothing for me. I've got cannabis advisory and board of health tomorrow. So in August, I should have a little update. Yeah, just CPC had the annual forum yesterday. It was my first time actually in the trailer. That's all, um, well, I actu- I actually had to leave before the guest speakers, but, um, but it's always a really nice event.
No, I'm just gonna repeat the, um, housing forum. And hope everybody will attend.
Oh, I, I did attend the State of the Harbor yesterday. Yeah, called that. Emily Land Council held, but all natural resource department was there. So you had Jeff and Thais and Tara. And I had to, I can only stay an hour, so I didn't get to the Q and A part. But I ran into somebody afterwards and they said it was really informative and went really well. So it was, it was well done and well attended. I mean, there must've been a hundred people there.
And we also had the summer forum. The, um, Community Association and Civic League co-hosted this year. And, um, I thought it went well, I hope.
Yeah, it was a nice event. It was nice to be in person. I, I don't think I've attended one as a select board member in person yet. So that was really nice. Um, so I will just add, um, the event that Fairwins is hosting on, um, August 3rd. Um, I, I had some interest in attending and then I realized it was a Wednesday evening. Um, I don't know if other board members have any interest in attending. It goes from 5:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Um, and it, uh, would require us to start our meeting later on August 3rd, um, instead of 5:30, starting at 6:30, um, so that we could leave the event at 6:00 and, and get back here. I don't know if any other board members have any interest in postponing that meeting time so that we could attend? Um, or what your thoughts are on that? And obviously, we're not asking Jason's opinion, cause he won't be here.
I, I actually would appreciate that. I think it's gonna be a unique opportunity that I'd like to do. So if all the board members don't mind starting an hour late.
I'm fine. We'll just keep the agenda late. Great. Especially without Jason here.
I guess with some good public outreach, so we don't have a huge audience at 5:30 waiting for us to arrive.
Yeah, well, great. Well, thank you for that. I, I'm looking forward. I'll go home and get my ticket.
Me too.
Any other comments?
Move to Jaren.
This is my last meeting with Melissa. So I wanted, I'm gonna be here next week. So, well, in person, you'll still be around.
That's awesome. I'll be kicking it until November 2nd.
Yeah, well, in person. Thank you, Melissa.
And Melissa means we have roll call votes for.
That's right. Sorry about that in advance, but.
Our last quick, quick motions.
I'll, I'll second Matt's motion.
All, all those in favor? Aye, aye, that passes. Thank you.
Thank you.